Welcome to the Beverly Hills Board of Education regularly scheduled meeting for this December 5th, 2023. Called the meeting to order, it is 5:05, perhaps the earliest we've started a meeting in a long time. Thank you colleagues for all being here. And before we start the meeting, I just want to have a moment of silence. One of our own, Sheila Willis, passed away and she was in our custodial staff for over a decade. And we want to recognize her hard work and her dedication to the district. It's somebody whose face we always saw after meetings here and got to say goodnight to her. So it's personal to all of us as well. Just take a moment of silence everyone to honor her. Thank you very much. With that, I'd like to get a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Thank you Dr. Stern and Mrs. Wells. Any questions or comments? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, agenda is approved. Oh pledge, sorry, thank you. Kids, you want to all lead us in the pledge?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Nailed it. Okay, moving on. Dr. Breck, you report of closed session action.
Thank you President Margo, there was no action in closed session.
Alrighty, and we can jump right into it. We have our teacher-student spotlight, who is introducing us tonight?
Mr. Bugby.
Thank you school board and community. Here for our teacher spotlight tonight, we have Ms. Stamaria Nakas. Everyone say it with me. Stamaria Nakas. That's our first lesson for today. At Horace Mann, we've seen a need to build more community connections within our Horace Mann community. Maria Stamaria Nakas and Coach Mary White started our Husky ambassadors, or our Husky PAC leaders. We are only a couple of weeks in, but we already have great things to share. Ms. Stam, come on up and tell us more about our Husky PAC leaders.
Hi everyone, my name is Maria Stam. I am a 4th grade teacher at Horace Mann and I have the honor and privilege of being here with three members of our brand-new program, Husky ambassadors, which is a PBIS initiative, like Mr. Bugby said, to build community within our school and really raise the leadership and responsibility of our incredible 5th grade class. So they're going to take a minute to introduce themselves.
Hello, my name is Brandon Shokram. I'm a 5th grade student at Horace Mann Elementary School. I've been in Horace Mann since 5th grade, I mean 1st grade, sorry, thank you.
Hi, my name is Aria Carroll. I'm a 5th grade student at Horace Mann. I've been a student at Horace Mann since kindergarten.
Hi, my name is Lucy Wardham and I'm a 5th grade student at Horace Mann. And I've been a student here since kindergarten.
So fabulous representation from our Horace Mann community, students who have been with us for a really long time and are really ready to share their skills and their abilities and their kindness with the entire school. We have a mission statement, which we will be sharing in a little bit, but while we wait for that to get here, we're going to talk about some of the things that we've been working on. As Mr. Bugby said, we are a newer program, so we're starting off small, building up our responsibilities. And at the moment, one of those main responsibilities is greeting students at the Charlieville Gate every morning. So we have a bright, smiling face and someone who's able to really help out our younger students, walking them to their spot in line, helping them get adjusted and feel comfortable at our school. And each of our fabulous 5th graders are going to share what they really like about this role so far.
What I like helping these students for is that whenever they're not with their parent, they would like to start crying. And then after, I try to help them comfort and then after they get recognizable, they start to be happy.
Welcome to the Beverly Hills Board of Education regularly scheduled meeting for this December 5th, 2023. Called the meeting to order, it is 5:05, perhaps the earliest we've started a meeting in a long time. Thank you colleagues for all being here. And before we start the meeting, I just want to have a moment of silence. One of our own, Sheila Willis, passed away and she was in our custodial staff for over a decade. And we want to recognize her hard work and her dedication to the district. It's somebody whose face we always saw after meetings here and got to say goodnight to her, so it's personal to all of us as well. Just take a moment of silence everyone to honor her. Thank you very much. With that, I'd like to get a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Thank you, Dr. Stern and Mrs. Wells. Any questions or comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, agenda is approved. Oh, pledge, sorry, thank you. Kids, you want to all lead us in the pledge?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nailed it. Okay, moving on. Dr. Breck, your report of closed session action.
Thank you, President Margot. There was no action in closed session.
Alrighty, and we can jump right into it. We have our teacher-student spotlight. Who is introducing us tonight?
Mr. Bugby.
Thank you, school board and community. Here for our teacher spotlight tonight, we have Ms. Stamata Yanakis. Everyone say it with me.
Well done.
Stamata Yanakis. That's our first lesson for today. At Horace Mann, we've seen a need to build more community connections within our Horace Mann community. Maria Stamata Yanakis and Coach Mary White started our Husky ambassadors, or our Husky PAC leaders. We are only a couple of weeks in, but we already have great things to share. Ms. Stam, come on up and tell us more about our Husky PAC leaders.
Hi, everyone. My name is Maria Stam. I am a 4th grade teacher at Horace Mann and I have the honor and privilege of being here with three members of our brand-new program, Husky ambassadors, which is a PBIS initiative, like Mr. Bugby said, to build community within our school and really raise the leadership and responsibility of our incredible 5th grade class. So they're going to take a minute to introduce themselves.
Hello, my name is Brandon Shokram. I'm a 5th grade student at Horace Mann Elementary School. I've been in Horace Mann since 5th grade. I mean, 1st grade, sorry. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Aria Carroll. I'm a 5th grade student at Horace Mann. I've been a student at Horace Mann since kindergarten.
Hi, my name is Lucy Wardrum and I'm a 5th grade student at Horace Mann and I've been a student here since kindergarten.
So fabulous representation from our Horace Mann community, students who have been with us for a really long time and are really ready to share their skills and their abilities and their kindness with the entire school. We have a mission statement, which we will be sharing in a little bit, but while we wait for that to get here, we're going to talk about some of the things that we've been working on. As Mr. Bugby said, we are a newer program, so we're starting off small, building up our responsibilities. And at the moment, one of those main responsibilities is greeting students at the Charleeville Gate every morning. So we have a bright, smiling face and someone who's able to really help out our younger students, walking them to their spot in line, helping them get adjusted and feel comfortable at our school. And each of our fabulous 5th graders are going to share what they really like about this role so far.
What I like helping these students for is that whenever they're not with their parent, they would like to start crying. And then after, I try to help them comfort and then after they get recognizable, they start to be happy and now they feel more comfortable after their parent left. And that it's been very nice because now I notice I'm the same kids and now less and less, they get more happier to see us.
I like helping students in the morning because it makes them feel more welcomed and comfortable because they know that there are people here that they can trust other than adults and that we will help them with whatever they need.
I like helping the students here at Horace Mann because like 5th graders and T.K.'s and kindergartners, they don't like get to socialize with each other and doing this student ambassador program will help them socialize. A teacher at Horace Mann, Ms. Goldstein, like one of her goals for the T.K.'s is for them to socialize together. And that's why I like to help here at Horace Mann.
And you can already tell, just in the few short weeks we have been doing this, they're starting to recognize our 5th graders, go to them for help, and our goal moving forward is that not just in the morning at the gate, but all around campus, they'll be able to seek out these ambassadors and go to them if they need anything. And they've been doing a really great job so far. As we said, this is a newer program. We do have some hopes and some goals and some dreams for where this will move forward to and they're going to share some of those hopes with you. Go ahead.
One of my goals is that I always want them to look up at me. When I mean by that, I mean that learning the right things and not learning all the bad things because in the future, they will always be looking up at us and always be remembering us, what we always did as our actions, as we did at school. Thank you.
I want to teach younger students how to socialize. I want to make them feel more welcomed at school and teach them how to follow the Husky I-5.
When students are having a bad day, I want them to know that the 5th graders are here for them and they can like come for them for help and that we all are supporting each other.
I think you can tell just by these three students how incredible and how lucky we are to have such amazing 5th graders representing our campus. We have a group of about 25 5th graders right now doing amazing things and we hope to just keep building and growing into bigger and more roles and we look forward to what this group will become. I know we didn't get a chance to say the mission at the beginning, so Aria, if you want to come up and share that and then we will close.
Our mission is to empower the 5th grade students with leadership skills, a sense of ownership and school-wide pride through school-wide responsibilities and mentorship roles.
And this picture on the slide is from something we started on Friday. We all had a purple pom-pom and we were cheering students as they walked on into the campus to also build excitement and joy and happiness at school. So we really look forward to where this is going to go and can't wait to update you on all the great things we have. Mr. Bugby, I don't know if you have anything to close with.
Yep, thank you. Ms. Starkins, if you can forward a couple of slides. So on this slide, you see the students who are in this program with their purple pom-poms. There they are. So that's the Charleeville Gate toward the back of the picture. They make two lines so that when kids come in the gate, they start cheering for them and wave their pom-poms. It was a little overwhelming for some, so we're going to move them off to one side for those who choose not to go through the middle. So we're working on it. It's a work in progress, but it's a great work in progress and I thank you all. Job well done.
Colleagues, any remarks?
I just want to say, I'm so impressed with this program. I think this is the cutest little touch to start everyone's day off with. And I'm so excited. I think this is going to show great results in terms of the social and emotional development that we see in our kids, especially going into the middle school and it's just a great positive reinforcement program. And so I thank you, Ms. Stam, and all of you students for participating in this. I think this is amazing.
I just want, can you hear me? Okay. Well, I just want to say you're great ambassadors and really great role models and I don't know if you realize it, but you're really having such an impact on the lower-grade students. So congratulations and keep up the good work because you really are making a difference.
Hi, guys. Thank you so much for joining us. I went to Horace Mann and I loved it and I remember being an 8th grader and being kind of like a hall monitor, but also doing a lot of the stuff that you're talking about. And it was one of my favorite things and I'm glad that it's, you know, reinvigorated and happening again, this version of it. So I commend you all and thank you for being here.
Thank you. A real highlight tonight to see you guys. I don't know if you're aware, but Beverly Hills, the city itself, has ambassadors, ambassador program, which I think is a wonderful idea. And so the next time you're going down Beverly Drive or through the city, you might see them outfitted in, I think, black and blue outfits and it's a wonderful concept.
Thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Bugby, for bringing this terrific crew. I was wondering, when I leave tonight, can you guys stand outside and just cheer for me?
Can I say?
Are you available for that?
Do you have purple pom-poms?
Can I mention, I want to just tell you that I'm very impressed by the program. And I know that going on to Beverly Vista, as you will next year, that you can want to get involved in doing things like this. And I really, I only want to say one thing. I think they should have some sort of little purple vest that they can put on in the morning.
Working on it.
And I think that we should, if you want to see what we could do to get that going, I think that would be a great. I would love to see that. Guys, you were terrific and I noticed that poised you were when you got up here, really speaking without, I know you had papers, but you really didn't use them and I was very, very impressed by that. So congratulations on a wonderful presentation.
So is K. Bev ready with the "Now No One Knows"? Are they ready for that? For my my final "Now No One Knows", hopefully we'll leave you all on a positive note, no pun intended. Thank you. Now we just sit here and limbo. Any updates from the control room? Ooh. It's always something. Here we go. A little bit of a difficulty. We're going to go to consent calendar. Oh, no, I have actually public comment. Is there any public comment? Okay, no public comments. See what I'm doing here? Drawing it out, drawing it out. Are they ready with the video now? Should I keep going? Keep going, thank you. Okay. Consent calendar. Anybody pulling any items from consent? Nope. Okay, can I have a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus and Dr. Stern. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Terrific. Calendar is approved. Now it's just our report, so. I would venture if you put it up, then that would throw another wrench in the plan, right? Okay, improv. Moving on to number 12, Personnel Services. Can I get a motion for number 12, please?
I will make a motion to approve the resolution number 202324-05 regarding release from temporary certificated position.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus and Dr. Stern. Any questions on this one? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'm running out of runway, folks. How are we looking there? Almost set? Just... Hey, weren't those Horace Mann kids wonderful? How about a Husky high five for those little ones? Yay, yay for them. Oh, you know what? Here, I'll stall one more thing. The results came in for my No Tech Challenge that I did. I had five students turn in their screen time. I don't know how many kids were actually paying attention to it. I would venture to guess that there were more kids that probably were eligible, that just didn't bother with it, but there were five kids who all almost reduced their screen time by 50% for that week, which I know for us, it's not a big deal, but I would say for a teenager, it's probably a huge deal. So, and we're going to arrange, I have the prizes for them and we're going to meet at the Norman Aid Center later this week and I will give them their prizes and we'll take a photo, but I will mention their names, the five that turned in their results. Sienna Shirian, Jonathan Saidian, Sophia Manavi, believe it or not, Reese Margot, and Paul, a student named Paul Kim, who I'm awarding a prize because he wrote me and said, "He gave up his smartphone last spring and he doesn't have a smartphone anymore. And when could he be eligible?" And I said, "You know what? You were smart enough to write." I said, "If I have the prizes left, you're going to get one." So he's going to get one too. So they'll all be reached out this evening and we'll set that up. How are we looking there?
We're working on it.
We're working on it. Okay, then here's what we'll do, folks, because I'd like to move on. We will get, when they're ready, when you guys are ready with it, let me know and it'll be the next item. I'm just going to continue going through the agenda, okay? So that will bring us to Student Board Member Report. Oh. And they're going to have to screen share too. We need a good old poster board and an easel, folks. That's what I say. You can screen share. You're up.
Okay, so good evening, Board President Margot, members of our board and our members of our public. It's a pleasure to be here today to be able to present the first interim report. Just let me go ahead and share my screen here, so you should be able to see that on your screen or on the screen here at the top. Okay, alright. So just, I wanted to just take the time to just thank again our team for all the work that's been done. This was a collaborative effort. We met with department heads and everyone from, just in the different departments. So we're so thankful for everybody's work. Special thanks to Angelie for her work and the work that she did with the interim, as well as Ms. Maradutti Articles for the work that she's done. It was a lot of work to get this interim report done and I'm just thankful to all of them. I'm thankful to our departments as well and our assistant superintendents, Mr. Seaman, Dr. Horvath, Ms. Laura Collins-Williams for their support in making sure that our numbers made sense and always thank them for working with us, as well as our principals for meeting with us as well to look at their budgets and make sure that everything's falling in line. So we had a comprehensive review of our budget, of where we were, where we're at and where we're going. So just real quickly, you've all seen these slides. We're currently at the first interim report. This is a cyclical budget, so next up is going to be our governor's budget proposal and then our second interim report will follow. Some trends that you could see, as you know, we're a property tax-funded district, so we're community-funded. That's very different from most school districts, which are funded mainly on state aid. So for us, what that means is that we get more funding just based on property taxes. ADA doesn't really change our funding source, so that's something that's really important to note, although in certain areas it does. In special ed funding, for example, ADA does impact us. But mainly, in our main revenue source, we don't get an impact if we have a change in ADA or increased enrollments. So that's something to note. Just real quickly, this trend is important to see. So you can see our property taxes continue to rise and at a very nice rate and we're happy to see that. It actually looks better than we had anticipated so far. But mind you, at the second interim report, we'll have some better numbers and we'll be able to see where that landed. So our property taxes do look better, though. Our enrollment looks to be pretty stable compared to last year's audit and actuals look. We're pretty much right where we were, so it's pretty stable. There are very, very minor decline. In regards to salaries, our salaries have gone up. The majority of that can be attributed to the 2.5% increase in the salary schedules from last year. And our per-student expenditures are also going up. If you have more revenues and you have more expenses and the amount of students stays pretty consistent, your per-student ratio goes up. If we add more students, the per-student ratio goes down. So it's one of those things in a community-funded district, whereas in a regular district, the more enrollment and ADA you have, the higher amount of funding that you have. So let's just look at general funds. So if we were to break out $1, right? So for every dollar, 71 cents of that dollar comes from local Beverly Hills property taxes. So that's where that would come from, the majority of our monies. 18 cents come from other local revenues, such as the City of Beverly Hills JPA, BHEF, PTAs and other gifts and donations. And I just want to again thank our partners at BHEF for their support to the district and all their contributions that they generously give towards the district. We're so thankful for BHEF and what they're doing for our district as well. And also thankful to our PTAs for all the work that they do to support as well. So thank you to both of those groups of support. Every nine, for 9 cents of every dollar comes our EPA funds, which is the Educational Protection Act. Basic aid, supplements, lottery, CTE mandated costs and COVID programs account for about 9 cents for every dollar that we receive. And finally, about 2 cents are federal funds, so they have their 2 cents. Pun intended, I guess, but I don't know. At 2324, total general fund expenses, how are we spending our money? Well, for every dollar that we get, 77 cents goes towards employee salaries and benefits, 3 cents towards books and supplies, 19 cents towards services and other operating expenses, which includes our utilities, and so that's a big portion of our budget as well. And finally, 1 cent for our deferred maintenance and technology refresh, which is something new that I'm thankful that the board has had the foresight to look to the future and establish that technology refresh fund. How does the first interim, what is the first interim? Why are we here? Because we have to be here. It's a report that we have to do per state law, per ed code and it's due by the 15th of December, so we're right on time. It looks at all your actuals from July through October 31st. So that's the period of time that we're looking at. So you will see changes at our second interim because things happen. More things hit our books and more situations happen, so we're able to look at changes. So when you're looking at changes, that's a good thing. If you don't see any changes, then you probably should ask me, "Well, what's going on? Like, are you not looking at the budget?" Because things change throughout the year. So that's something that's important to look at. So we have changes from the adopted budget that we'll be going over. So here's a look at that. And we kind of forecasted this with the board, with the 45-day revision, so you all kind of already know about these changes. Our property taxes, when we did our budget, what we received was that we would be getting 66.9 million, but we actually are at 68.8. So that's a pretty big swing, you know, compared to what we were estimating when we did the adopted budget. Mind you, we did it in June and so we still hadn't received some other reports. And so these reports actually show that we're in a much better property tax position. So that's really important for us to note. State aid stayed about the same. All other state revenues have gone up. The majority of that, as you know, we mentioned to the board, the low-performing, I'm sorry, the Arts Music Instructional Material Discretionary Block Grant went up, as well as our the Arts Music Instructional Material Discretionary Block Grant went up, as well as our Emergency Learning Recovery Grants. Those two are the reasons why we have an increase there for federal, I'm sorry, for all of the state. Federal revenues went down slightly and local revenues went up. The majority of the increase to the local revenues have to do with our JPA agreements increase. So we're seeing that in our books. We're accounting for it now at first interim, because we didn't have that factor when we did our budget. Now, how does the expense side look? Well, we've seen a little bit of a decrease in certificated salaries as far as the projections go. Mind you, that was a projection at the adopted budget. So we were projecting for certain things to happen and certain salaries to, or when people are hired in at a certain ratio of salary, those are all projections. So we're looking at though, as though we're going to be at 37.9 million. We'll see how it looks at second interim, but that's what we're projecting now. Classified salaries, they went up slightly. Majority of that has to do with additional overtime needs that we had across the district. We've had just some unusual amount of absences in some of our departments, and that has caused us to cover that. We have to still maintain our facilities, and so that's created some increases towards our overtime. We're addressing that by hopefully doing some more hiring of some certain positions that will help address that. Employee benefits went down slightly, and again, that has to do probably with certificated salaries, again, going down. So books and supplies, a slight increase there of about $285,000. Services and other operating expenditures, those went up. The majority of that has to do with three things. One of them is utilities. Our electric costs have gone up, and they are continuing to rise, as is the case for mostly everyone in this room. Like, electric costs continue to rise, and so we're accounting for that now. The other factor that we're seeing is we did have some increases in our special ed education, in our special education contracts, so we are accounting for that as well. And the final area that we had some increases on is us accounting for just the additional grants that we received, the additional funding for the grants that we received. We were able to capture some services with those grant funds, so that's why you're seeing that increase there. Capital outlay, we're seeing a slight decrease there, and the rest of that looks pretty standard of where we were. Overall, if we go to the next slide here, the net change. So this is the really good news overall. The adopted budget was showing essentially between unrestricted and restricted, a negative of 4.1 in regards to, you know, not in our, where we're ending our actual fund balance, but just in deficit spending. We're actually showing only 910,000. The majority of that is restricted monies, so it should look like that, because we're spending down all of our COVID funds, and that's sitting in our fund balance. We're not getting a new revenue source, so it's going to look like it's a negative, but it really is just us spending down our monies. So that's looking good for us, which is a great change. Now, again, the majority, or the reason why we're seeing this positive move, has to do primarily with two things. Our property taxes are much higher than we projected, and of course, the JPA revenues coming in at where they came in. So those two are driving our better ending fund balance to now be much more balanced. And we'll go to that in our next slide, but before that, you could see that our Fund 17 is ending at about 10.5. Fund 17 tech plan is at about $1 million, and our Fund 17 liabilities are at 2.2, leaving us with a 33.17% reserve, which is above what the, the 30% from the adopted budget. So that's good. Now, when you look at the unrestricted side of the house, which is the more, I mean, all your budget is important, but the unrestricted side is the one that will get you into real, real trouble if you're not really monitoring that. At the adopted budget, we were looking at deficit spending of about 2.8 million, but really now we're looking at a positive, a slight positive of about 185,000. So that's really good news for us, and again, that can be attributed to the increase in property taxes and the increase to the JPA. Finally, other funds. We could see our ASB fund, we just showed, we have to show that now in our books. We're projecting that's going to be about $540,000 that we'll be spending this year all across the board. And cafeteria fund, we don't have a contribution, again, and that's really good. Our ending fund balance is going to be about $944,000, is what we're projecting. Our no contribution, again, for our food services, which is really good news. Fund 14, we are making significant expenses there in Fund 14, and we project to end the year at about $522,000. We are making a contribution of about $852,000, but we're projecting that, you know, in some of those expenses out, so that's why we have an ending fund balance there. Fund 17 is growing. Mainly, that growth is attributed to the $500,000 contribution towards the tech fund and the interest income that we're seeing in Fund 17. Fund 21, we're showing about $80 million in expenses this year, leaving Fund 21 at about $109 million. Fund 25, that should end at about close to $1 million. We're looking at spending about 2.2 million this year, and we are kind of realigning our expenses to be able to do that, so that we spend these monies down before any sort of due dates, and so that's why we're doing that. Fund 35, that's the state seismic mitigation dollars, those are sitting there, but those will be expended as well as we expend the bond. Fund 67 is ending in pretty much where it started, at about $727,000. And finally, Fund 71, our OPEB funds, we're at about 6.2 million. A quick note on OPEB, I just got the actuarial report two days ago, and really good news. We actually are at a higher discount rate, and so we're making a really good move there. Our net OPEB liability is dropping, so that's really good news. Finally, next steps, approval of the first interim here, hopefully, and just expect further revisions at second interim. As you know, it's our job to make sure we look at the budget and that we update it as things go, and so that's going to be really important for us to look at and to continue to monitor property taxes. Just like we saw that big swing upwards, we want to make sure we don't see a swing downwards. And I heard a bell, I'm assuming that's my time. So, questions?
No, just, it's when you have us against the ropes.
Yes.
Okay. Colleagues, questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mrs. Marcus, anything?
No, I just want to thank you for that very comprehensive and quick report. It was like someone chasing you, and I really, and I could follow it completely, and I really, all the work that goes into preparing this, and I'm sure that we're going to get a positive report, so that's what counts, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Colleagues, I need a motion for this.
I will make a motion to approve the first interim report, 2023-24.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Marcus and Mrs. Wells. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay. You have an approved budget. Nope, stay up there. You're going to do your developer fee report. I'm going to keep you up there, and then we'll go back to the other stuff. Thank you, Kbev. I understand you're ready to go, but we're going to finish up with Mr. Guzman first.
So, yeah, so the annual developer fee report, it's a requirement of Government Code Sections 66006 and 66001, sorry, that's a mouthful, to report this. And essentially, what it is, is we report what we received in developer fees, and so we want to show this here. I'm sharing my screen now, and you should be able to see there on the screen. So the fees that we reported in this year, we collected 896,906, 90684. The beginning balance was $2 million as of July 1, 2022, and we ended with 2.8 million. We did have some expenses. They were minor last year. The majority of those could be seen in the, we had $51,000 for Hawthorne TK Classroom Supplies and Equipment, about $27,000 towards the Bulldog Wellness Center, for a total of $111,000. As you can see there, those are some of the expenses, maybe you could see it better there, that we spent there. And the district has charged, you know, the administrative expenses as well to the developer fee, and that is about it. It's just a report that we show of where we're standing with developer fees. So the most important thing to note here is where our ending fund balance was, which is what we just shared in the previous slide. We do have about five years to make sure that we spend those funds, but we are rearranging our, the way we're expending the bond dollars to make sure that we spend these first, which is what kind of should have been the way we looked at it, and so we're doing that now and making sure that in 2324, we deplete this as best as possible. Now, developer fees, just real quickly, is something that is very specific of what we can spend on. That's why a lot of times it's like the last spent, because it's tricky. You have to make sure you spend it on things that are related to new classrooms and things of that nature. As you know, in the bond, we have several projects that are going on that are adding classrooms, so that's why we're, you know, looking to project to spend those monies.
So I just wanted, on top of that, Rafael, in pursuant to our conversation earlier at the study session regarding the preschool and TK, there were possibilities of projects discussed for Horseman Playground, things like that. Is that something that this, we can tap the developer fees for?
The portions that are related to the actual classrooms, I believe we can. I would have to check in regards to the playground, because you can make an argument that the playground would be an extension of it, but I have to check on that.
Okay.
So, but thank you for pointing that out.
Thank you. Colleagues, any other questions about this?
I'll make a motion to...
This one is not an approval.
No motion, okay.
No, just a...
Your first, yes.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Guzman. Thank you for, I love positive number news. Should fire my account and hire you. Kbev, are we ready? Yes, thank you, once again. Here we are. And no sound.
Hi, welcome to Now No One Knows. I am once again at Beverly Vista Middle School. I'm here with Katina Valens, the orchestra and band teacher. Katina, how long have you been with the district?
I have been here 14 years.
Can you tell us all something about yourself that nobody really knows?
I'm also a dancer. I started dancing when I was three, and I danced all the way through high school and college on my high school and college dance teams. I was actually the captain of my high school dance team the same year that I was drum major of the marching band.
So you're holding a violin. Right, this is not a viola. Violas are bigger?
Violas are bigger, yep. They have, three of the four strings are common. The violin's highest string is the highest of the bunch, and then they share the middle two strings, so the A, D, and G strings are the same, and then the violas have one that goes lower than that, the C string.
I see little tiny kids playing these things like it's second nature. If they can do it, so can I. Or maybe not, we'll see in a few minutes.
The first thing that we have to do is learn to hold the violin. So it is deceptive in that when you put the violin up, you are not actually holding it with your left hand. You should be holding it with your chin. And so what we have the kids do is hold it straight in front. If you hold that and then flip it over your hand, arm like this, and then chin up, and you want your nose to face that way over the scroll. Good, and then chin down. Good. Can you take your hand off successfully? Good. The first thing that we teach the kids is a technique called pizzicato, which means to pluck. And so you're going to take your right hand, make an L, and then you keep these fingers away. You're going to anchor your thumb on the side of the fingerboard. Yep, and then your hands are free to pluck the strings. Excellent, and you're natural. The names of our strings, the furthest one away from you is G, then D, A, and E.
G, D, A, E.
Yes, exactly. And today, we're going to use primarily the D string and the A string. Let's try, ready? One, two, ready, go. Rest, add. Excellent. And the nice thing about string instruments is, well, most instruments, but it's very sequential, so this is going to be G, take one off is F-sharp, take one off is E, take one off is open D. We're just giving you the crash course of beginning orchestra.
Oh, we're crashing.
You're doing great. Ready? Nice. Do that again, open A. Good, then back to open D. The D, mhm. Yeah, good. So do you want to add the bow now, or you want...
I do, I'm excited about that.
Yeah, okay, let's do it. Okay, so the bow is the other, like, really tricky part about playing the string instrument, because you cannot, like, death grip it. This is called the frog, like, ribbit, ribbit. So point that this way, so flip the bow over in your hand. Yep. Thumb is going to bend and go right in that little pocket right there. Yeah, so it should be bent like that, so that you're here, and then your fingers will drape over the top if you can. And you can hold it, because the violin will be holding it.
Oh, it's supposed to extend.
Yeah, so we don't want it like that, so you can, yeah, that's actually really nice. Good job. Takes the kids weeks and weeks and weeks to get that. So the thing with the bow on the instrument is you want to move basically only your elbow. You don't want to move your shoulder. So when you get to the tip of your bow, your arm should be pretty far away from you, and your wrist is very flexed like it was when we just did this.
Right.
It's just this, it's just here. And then if we set, we set all the way to the frog to start, and then... Good, yeah. Yes, nice. Good. Any note, unless it's marked otherwise, yes, will be, this is one direction, this is the other direction, this is one direction. Every note gets its own bow, unless there's that, the slur, which means that these two notes are in the same bow, and you can get, you know, slurs for more than two notes. All right, so starting on open D, ready? One, two, ready, go. Now, three fingers on the D.
This is what it sounds like on its own. I'm going to dub some yo-yo.
Yeah, there you go. You can put a beat behind it.
Katina, thank you so much for showing us.
My pleasure.
This is, it's like opened up a whole new world of music for me that I watched for a lot of years, and now I understand it a little more.
Yeah.
So, and I appreciate all of you string players out there. I appreciate you very much. Thank you very much.
Yes, my pleasure.
And now, no one knows.
Oh, God, if you clap for that, your standards are low. Now, this was shot in, earlier before Ms. Valens left us, criminally, I will say, but she, I did all that in about 45 minutes. So she got me from zero to where I landed in about 45 minutes. So to think of what she can do with a student in the course of a year is pretty remarkable. And she was a gem for this district, and I hesitated whether I should do this one or not, but it was, I think, too valuable to learn. For all those who hesitate about learning and picking up an instrument, you are never too old to do it, and it is so good for your brain to do so, so I highly recommend it in the future. So thank you very much for indulging my year of Now No One Knows. Turn it over to our reports.
I think you could just whistle and it will beep me. Okay. It's been an eventful couple weeks in the district, seeing as we have the extra week off because of the holiday break, so I'll jump right in. Starting off in chronological order with our Visual and Performing Arts Department here at the high school, as I think we all know and got to experience ourselves, the Theater Arts Department at the high school put on the play She Kills Monsters the week of November 15th, 16th, and 17th before break, which was a, I personally, an amazing success, especially considering the new direction, I think, of the material and the addition of an extra play in the curriculum this year. So, all things considered, especially, I want to commend them on their stage fighting skills, which I know they practiced a lot for and were very nicely featured. And yeah, this was an amazing, an amazing experience. Next up, that same week, the city had its tree lighting ceremony, which featured performances and involvement from students, both in the marching band, who performed Down Rodeo, as you can see here, and through the city's Explorers Program, which some of our high school students are in, which they were there patrolling around in. And this was a great community event, and as was also very enjoyed by the marching Next up, some highlights from our athletic program in the past couple weeks. On the left here, we have boys' basketball in a victory against Crossroads from last week. Yeah, their season's coming up soon, and all the tournaments they've been attending so far are very promising in terms of how our season's looking so far. And then similarly, on the right, we have our girls varsity soccer team, who won a game against Sacred Heart last week, and again, are performing... last week, and again, are performing very, very well against mostly D1 and D2 schools so far. So, very proud of both of those programs. Moving on to some events we've had at the high school in the past couple of weeks. On the left is a picture of the seniors from Color Wars, a competition event we have every year, where they narrowly maintained a victory over the freshmen of all classes. And then, on the right, on the right, we have a photo of our ASB volunteers from the blood drive last week, where we made almost 60 successful donations. So, very proud of that one. And then next, more recently here, on the right, last weekend, the Schools Interact Club, which is sort of the junior version of the city's Rotary Club, participated in a fire safety training program over with the Beverly Hills Fire Department, which was very cool, with a special celebrity guest appearance from Ms. Garrett herself. And then, on the left, just last week, I believe, or maybe two weeks ago, we, this high school got to, the opportunity to listen to a Holocaust survivor come speak on behalf of the Israel Club, which was a really great opportunity, as I'm sure you can imagine, for the students. And just a note on that one, next week, they will be having a woman coming from an Israeli kibbutz come speak. So, that's an event to definitely be on the watch for. And that about wraps it up. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Bregge.
Thank you, and good evening. This report will be delivered to you with the inspiration as if someone is chasing me. So, I'd like to go right into a very special event that occurred last Thursday. Every year, the California School Board Association has an annual education conference. And one year, it is in San Francisco, and then the alternate years is either San Diego, or we now heard that next year it will be in Anaheim. Our strategic plan, we've talked about the recognition that our district has been seeking out, which is really well-deserved recognition in many areas, including, you know, Teacher's Staff of the Year. We had submitted a proposal, I think it was back in April of last year, that was then accepted by CSBA. So, we had a great opportunity to, at a state level, be able to recognize and represent our school district in a very well-attended conference presentation for many. And so, I just want to thank Mr. Margot, our entire school board, and Ms. Starkins. We had a really interactive presentation that was really engaging and very different style from many that you typically would see at a conference. And so, I'm really appreciative of the board for being open to getting some real data from people using Poll Everywhere, and that shaped our presentation as we delivered it. As part of that presentation, we did have, and we shared with boards, a protocol that we use. And you can see, there's a little bit of a change to this. I know that many people here are very familiar with this. Instead of who do you call, who do I call, it's where do I start? And that was based on some feedback that we received from parents. They said that, you know, where do I start is typically where I need to get direction on where to go, starting with our teacher, and then ultimately, kind of working their way through the process. And it's been a very successful protocol for us, and we were able to share that. And I think, you know, we had this available for all of the participants, and I think it was just fun for us to watch people come in because it was at their seat, and they were already taking pictures and sharing it. And so, this is something that many districts, this was one of the many takeaways that they had from the CSBA conference. I want to thank Mrs. Manishery and also Debbie Berman from the Jewish Federation of Greater Los Angeles for making me aware of this opportunity. It was a program called Shine the Light Against Anti-Semitism. And as you can see in this picture, there's only about 20 of us. It was a very intimate evening, and it was really a great opportunity for us to be able to come together, support the Jewish community as educational leaders, but then also talk about supporting all communities facing harassment, discrimination, and bigotry. And the opportunity for us coming together as educational leaders was using the voice that we do have in our positions as educational leaders to work together to stand up against anti-Semitism in all forms of hate, and how to work best with our staff and our students. And it was just a very moving evening. It, you know, I want to thank my administrative team, seven or eight people that wanted to join me. And as you can see, it was a very small group that went, but it was, you know, they wanted to keep it very small, but it's something that's growing. And just, not only professionally, but just personally, the growth that I received as a leader, because I had an opportunity to reach out to others and share what's happening in our school district. I was joined by Shannon Cabellis, who's an assistant principal here at Beverly Hills High School. And so, we represented our school district. And boy, we met some movers and shakers in our community. And this is just a bonding experience that I know that will continue on in the future. And this was just something I'll be able to report on, you know, as we continue our relationship. But it was really moving, and it was really effective. And the number of resources that I've received as a school leader is really going to be something that I can pass on to others and really feel like we can make a difference in our school district. This morning, we had a great opportunity. Mrs. Manishery was there, Dr. Stern, Mr. Seaman. This was an opportunity for us to look at something new in the district from the high school, and this is ASCA. It's the American School Counselor Association, and they have a model, it's a program for accreditation. And we had a meeting today that was really informative. It's really a model that is built on gathering data, setting goals, making decisions around that data, looking at closing the achievement gap, but at the same time, increasing student achievement. And what I really liked about the conversation today was that it's aligned to our strategic plan. And that's pretty amazing, because I think that if people are listening to our meetings, they're seeing more alignment to our strategic plan, which then gives more power to this work and people believing in this work. And so, my takeaway today, Mr. Seaman, was just this unbelievable opportunity that we're capitalizing on, and that's consistency with the information that's being shared. And to be able to see this at the school site level and having them develop goals around this type of work is really exciting for us to see. And I really, you know, the additional part is, you know, we have strategic planning goals around chronic absenteeism and student discipline. And to see that this is also aligned to the work that our school counselors are doing is really amazing. And they're staying really busy, and it was really nice to be able to see how a group of people are making such an impact. And really, it was great for me, my learning, that what we are expecting our school counselors to do, and I know that this is starting in the middle school as well, that was really rewarding and refreshing to see that we're all going after the same thing. National Special Education Day was on Saturday, and so, this is a celebration for the law that was passed in 1972. And we're honoring our teachers, our students, administrators, all in the field of special education. And we want to make that recognition. We have an incredible special education program here in our school district that we're very proud of. We know that under the leadership of Ms. Collins-Williams, that people move to our school district to be part of our special education program. And so, this is a very special day. We didn't want it to go by without sharing that recognition with you. I have the opportunity to meet with all of our PTA presidents through the PTA Council. They are hosting a joint holiday toy drive. So, all four of our schools are working together to get unwrapped toys for the school year between the 4th and the 14th. So, the drop off's easy, and it is located in bins in front of each school. So, this definitely will change how many kids will feel about the holidays if you can get involved and share some toys at each school. Lastly, this is just such a great month. It is filled. I think there's something every single night with choir and band and orchestra. It's filled with all kinds of things. I mean, it starts really tomorrow night with the Science and Engineering Fair. It's just, and then continues all the way until break. It is a marathon of things that we are so proud of. And I want to give a special thank you to the teachers that put on these performances and these events, especially for those schools that are making it work in performance spaces that are not in their school. It's, that's not an easy thing to do, but there's a lot of great things that are coming up. So, here are some of the dates. Here are some of the concerts that are coming up. And please try to make it out to see our students in action. And that is it.
Thank you, Dr. Bregge. Is that last slide available, those dates available on the website?
Yep.
Okay. It's kind of tiny. Any comments or questions, colleagues? There it is again. Nope. Anything? No, I just...
I can't make it any bigger, but...
Can you go back to the toy drive?
Yep.
For a second. I just want to say something that was very cool. I watched the creation of this ad on Canva by our wonderful Ms. Starkins, who met with PTA leaders to teach them how to use Canva and how it aligns with the district branding. And it was, I observed some of that lesson, and it was very impressive what she was able to get these parents to learn in the short time and put something like this together, and the mentality behind all of our branding guidelines that goes in, and the thoughts about constructing, you know, visual advertisements for events and stuff. So, I just wanted to give a shout out to that because it's something, it's a tool that a lot of people, and I know, are aware of, but to really master it, obviously, like you have. But it helps the district look great. So, I appreciate that. Anything else for the superintendent report?
Nope.
Nope.
Welcome.
Okay, so with that, we are so efficient tonight. See what happens when you start on time, folks. It's a one beautiful thing. Communication for board members. So, any meeting reports or updates from our colleagues? I will go around and checkety-check.
All good, thank you.
All good, thank you.
Well, first of all, the CSBA conference is really fantastic, and I want to thank Rebecca and Michael and Noah for putting that together. And it was really fun to be participating and to present at the, at the conference. And at the end of the day, Judy and I ran into the LAUSD Superintendent, and it was really nice to share information with him as well, and share how we are working towards student achievement and what LAUSD is doing as well. And he offered for us to come and see their data digs, is what they call their data chats. So, that was really fun and really worthwhile event. And as well, Judy and I presented to the Raxton Park Commission and really just reported on all these great things that you're hearing about today. So, that was wonderful. Thanks.
I'm not going to repeat too much of that. That really, CSBA was an incredible day. Mrs. Wells and I went up in the morning and flew back that evening. It was exhausting, but I'm really glad that we did it. I had a great time, and I thought our presentation was really good, interactive, and you could just tell that they were asking questions, they were coming up afterwards. And so, I was really proud of the presentation and what we had to share. Yes, we bumped into the LAUSD team at the end of the evening, just before we got into our Uber to go back to the airport. And I wanted to invite you, Mr. Seaman, if you'll join me as my date, and anyone else from our district or your team that would like to attend. They invited us to, they call it data digs, and they shared with me their general counsel's card, who was, she was there with Superintendent Carvalho. And I, of course, said I would love to attend, and so would Mrs. Wells, but we only will attend if our Assistant Superintendent of Education Services can come. And they said, of course, and anyone else. And so, all I would say is if anybody's up for that, please just let me know how many, and I can correspond with them and let them know, and ask them maybe for some dates in January or February. They really wanted to learn from us, too. They're using the iReady. They're not using the NWEA. And so, it would be maybe an opportunity to compare and contrast. So, that's about it. It was a great experience. Just so much good stuff going on in this district. I'm very grateful. I also attended with Dr. Stern this morning, the counselor advisory committee, which was really interesting. They came with a ton of goals and pieces to the puzzle. I agree with you, Dr. Bregge. It is extremely complimentary and supportive of the strategic plan, and it actually feels really good to know that the different layers that are interacting with the kids and affecting their days, their academics, their success, are all working toward the same goal. So, I really commend everyone on that. Thank you for the invitation.
Ms. Marcus?
Yes, I just would like to say that I'm looking forward to all of the upcoming events starting tomorrow with the, the Science Fair, and then all of the concerts that I really enjoy going to in the next few weeks before the vacation. And, you know, these students work very, very hard, and it's very important for us to show our appreciation by being there for them. So, I'm hoping that we can get a great turnout for all of these particular concerts, the middle school, the elementary school, and the high school. They're all really terrific. And I'm always amazed at the talent that the teachers get out of them and the way the kids can perform, and they're poised. So, I'm looking forward to all of those events. And I think that's about it for me.
Thank you. Dr. Stern?
Well, as Ms. Manishery said, I did enjoy going to the counseling advisory meeting. Very interesting to see how much intelligence goes into really thinking about and nurturing a really good program here, not only for counseling for class placement, but for, you know, looking ahead post-secondary, and then other types of counseling as well. So, that was great. And then, I know that the family, the Mason Brooks family, for which we ran the marathon in commemoration of Mason, continues to be a very strong organization for not-to-day cancer. And I just wanted to remind you that along with the wonderful toy drive that was mentioned for our district, which is great, there's another opportunity as well. If you have unwrapped, or if you have an unwrapped toy that you would like to donate to 288 One Half South Beverly Drive, they are accepting gifts, and it goes to Children's Hospital of Los Angeles. And also, they are willing to pick up any unwrapped toys on December 16th. You simply call, and they will get it, and it goes to CHLA. And I think it's a wonderful thing that our, our school district is continuing to support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Stern. I want to thank K-Bav, as always. Just very subtly, this is my last meeting as president for a regular scheduled meeting. So, there's, and I will say, this is my last regular scheduled meeting that I will lead as my term ends in a year. And there's just little moments of this evening that I want to recognize because I won't have them again. That's by choice, by the way. And thanking K-Bav is one of them. I've, you guys have been here from the beginning, and I was here at the beginning doing what you did many, many moons ago with much larger equipment. So, I appreciate the time that you guys all spend doing this stuff. I wanted to point out, Dr. Bregge mentioned, and my colleagues mentioned, the CSBA conference. Our bond management team, Fonda Solari, was there with a booth on the trade show floor, and a lot of the photographs they had on their display were projects here at our school. We are not their only client, but we were a very featured client in their success as management, bond management. So, it was nice to see other schools getting to see that. Like my colleague said, running into people from around the state, board members, superintendents, other administrators, is always a refreshing thing to do in this position. So, we get out of our kind of bubble that we're in here. of our kind of bubble that we're in here, and see what's going on around the state. And a lot of, you find a lot of people have similar problems to we do, that we do, and then, like us, they have unique issues to their own, so it's a great educational experience all around. I want to wish the students good luck on finals, I won't have an opportunity to do that again, so good luck to all the students on finals. And for the last time, I will adjourn a meeting. Meeting adjourned.